To order since we're all here. First item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak? Hearing none. I'd like to add to the agenda approval of the minutes of April 12th, 2021, which was delayed from our last meeting. That was the meeting with the Charter Revision Commission. And we had just received it that the morning of our last meeting and we all needed some extra time to review it. I do have two corrections. And one request. These, the minutes of April 12th and May 10th didn't have pages, page numbers on them.
Yeah.
And that's a huge help if it says page one of how many ever and so we can the minutes of next set of minutes, which was, I'm sorry, May 4th did have the page numbers on it. My two corrections on the April 12th minutes. Paragraph three, section 3.5, one, two, three, fourth line down. My nickname is used rather than my full name. And then on page two, second line in the first full paragraph. It says Adam Teller with a lowercase t. It should be a capital T. And other than that, Jim, you did a great job.
And this, this is the fourth, May 4th?
No, this is May, April 12th. They weren't in your packet this month. They were in your packet last month.
Okay, thank you.
So is there a motion to accept these minutes or does anyone else have any additions or corrections?
I'll move the adoption of the, of the April 12th and 12th and 10th, correct?
No, it's just the 12th. We already did the 10th.
That's right. Okay. Then it's just the 12th with, with the suggested corrections.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Mike. So it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand, please. I see five hands. That's unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting from Tuesday, May 4th. And it was reading these that let me identify that we needed the April 12th minutes. Corrections in the also present line. It should be Bernice Dixon. And Mike, do you know Moira's last name?
Uh, no, not right off the top of my head. I don't.
Okay, because that's not listed.
Yeah.
Cheryl Udine's name is misspelled.
Yep.
There should be no E on the end. Should be U D I N.
I didn't see that one either. I saw Bernice's. That was it.
Then on page five of 12. Where it says capital improvement trailer. I didn't notice it that night, but I noticed it at the Board of Finance meeting and our next meeting. The Fire Commission wishes to purchase a 20 foot by 30 inch. It should be eight and a half foot.
Yes.
Is that, where is that? Is that in the, the column?
That's in the, in, under E, proposed transfers.
Oh, it's down in one of those transfer lists. Okay.
Yep.
It's the sixth item down for 18,000.
Right.
Yeah, we aren't buying a billboard. It is a real trailer.
Right, there we go. Yeah.
I found, as I was reading it, I went back to the minute, to the audio and found the, on the next page, page six. After the voting, it starts with Sandy's last name. There's a whole bunch of stuff left out of that paragraph when you compare it to the audio tape. And too much stuff to, to actually talk about. I think I really think they should go back for a rewrite of this paragraph because there's several sentences left out of this one. When you listen to the audio tape.
Well, it's not intended to be a transcript of the audio tape, Mike. But if you have a proposed rewrite or addition, I'd be happy to identify, to consider that at our next meeting and postpone the acceptance of these minutes until such point.
Okay, that would be great.
Moving on, I had
I will draw my motion to approve that so we can postpone.
Well, okay, but I have one more correction too. And that is on page 10 of 10, 10 of 12, rather. The next to the last line under C, other. It should say Pistrito, P I S T R I T T O. And then on the next page where we talk about administrators transition. It says Randy and Danielle's hours are being increased in the land use office. In five years, when somebody looks at this, they're not going to know who Randy and Danielle are. So if we could add their surnames, I'd be appreciative and I'm really bad, Jim. I don't know what they are.
Randy, Randy is Heckman. H E C K M A N. And Danielle is Palazzini, P A L A Z Z I N I.
Thank you. All right. So those corrections will stand till our next meeting and we will postpone acceptance of these minutes until Mike has his additions written.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is our approval.
I think Bob Di Pietro had something.
Oh, Bob Di Pietro?
Yes, there's a part where Jimmy referred, is praising you about your cooperation. Yeah, I think, I think it should read not this, it should be third person, not first minutes.
Pierog has been incredibly patient and helpful.
Where is this?
Page 11, item B.
You're muted, Bob.
Bob Di Pietro, you're muted. Now we can hear you.
It's sure say, he said, she has been.
Thank you, thank you. Missed that. Thank you. So if we can add, he said, or Rupert said.
Yeah, 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 that's, yeah, the beginning.
That helps the, the five year reader. I've been reading minutes from back when we were buying Indian Notch Park. And it's, it trying to do something like that brings out the need for surnames and not nicknames because some people are called different things in the same set of minutes. It's amazing how we've improved over the years. Moving on to May 10th, this was a special meeting. Mike, I have a question on, it's actually page two, item four.
Okay. Unfortunately, I don't have that set of minutes in front of me, but I'll bring them right up.
Well, you might be able to answer this without the minutes.
Okay.
Was the fire truck repaired originally for the welding issue in Watertown or West Haven?
Uh, it would have been Watertown.
It would have been. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's where Gowan's Night is located, who does most of our repairs to pumps and things like that.
Okay, I had the wrong location in my head, so that's helpful. Thank you. Moving on to page three of the minutes. Down near the bottom of the page in the paragraph where said Sandra shared, it does require action by the Board of Selectmen, that in the Board of Finance. The sent, the next sentence says, all these take time and the cost of borrowing for just the fire truck is almost the same cost as what we would have to bond on the fire truck. It should say all items. Rather than just the fire truck. And then on the next page. One, two, third column, third paragraph from the bottom again where it says Sandra Pierog. Brought up at Thursday's Board of Finance, she told the board that 125 had been identified. It says by the fire department turn, to turn back. That should say the Board of Selectmen.
Cindy, what page were you on just then?
Oh, I'm sorry. These pages aren't numbered, so one, two, three, page four.
Okay.
Of five.
Two thirds of the way down.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other additions or corrections to these minutes?
And I'll move, then I'll move the adoption of the minutes as corrected.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Mike. So it's been moved by Bob Morris, seconded by Mike Aramita. Any other further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. I see five hands.
Nice move.
That's unanimous. Jim, I don't believe we have any appointments tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I would like to remind Bob and Mike that we still have not received any diversity applications from your side of the political spectrum. I would love to get some.
I'll, I'll try and get that whip out again.
Thank you. Thank you. We will be doing it for sure in our July meeting and I would really like a full inclusion.
Thank you for the reminder. Thank you.
Oops, guys. Kim, can you take over this meeting? I have to take a doctor's call. Excuse me.
Sure, no problem.
First, first time in the hot seat. Let's
There you go. All right, and I'm trying to use my, the wrong mouse for my thing here. Okay. So we are on. Sorry, I didn't have the agenda. Reports, item five, reports and updates. Okay. So, subcommittee report, so let's say Sandy. Open space and management, who's doing that one? Because I think we need Sandy for the first two, right?
Have we had any, I don't think we've had any subcommittee meetings, have we, since?
I don't think there's been any.
None. Okay, awesome. Done, okay. And then properties and facilities.
That'd be a subcommittee as well, wouldn't it?
Correct. Yeah, unless they're, okay, they don't have any projects that we currently have going, so.
Okay. Open space and management and acquisition, open space management acquisition. I don't think there's been anything there either, right?
We don't have anything on the drawing board, right, we're looking at?
Okay, FYI, fiscal year 21 budget.
Yes.
You have that, Jim, right?
Yeah, so everything is on track with spending. We have absolutely no columns that are unbalanced at this point.
All right.
We've, we've made quite a few transfers, most of them small transfers for the fire department so that they can, you know, move monies around, fix lakes and things of that nature. Nothing extraordinary. And Sandy's back.
So do we think we're on track to still return the same amount that we had communicated to the Board of Finance?
Well, I will let Sandy talk about that since she's we were just talking.
We did A, B, C, and we're on D, Sandy.
You guys are good.
The 21.
We just said, let's crush these things off.
Well, I have to share that my husband's brain MRI came back normal for an individual of his age. So the stroke that we thought he had was probably a significant allergy attack. And not a stroke.
Wow, good news.
Well, that's a big, big difference from a stroke.
Oh, yeah, no kidding, no kidding. No kidding. So
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you, Lord, and all my friends who prayed for me.
Hallelujah.
Yeah. Anyway, that was a call I didn't, I wanted but didn't want. So anyways, the budget report, Jim and Jill went through line by line and were able to identify in addition to the 70,000 after the fire truck, an additional 70,000. Mostly in 1,500 and $2,000 amounts.
Yeah.
From accounts where we put money in and hardly ever spend it, but they're kind of just in case accounts. So they did a yeoman's job there to come up with that. And in addition, there's about a little over 130,000 that we were able to reduce our 2021, 22 request due to the transfer to the state partnership plan.
So that was for the health insurance?
That's for health insurance. We had some addition, but savings was actually more than that. But we had some additional expenses because our consultant is no longer paid by the, by the state partnership plan. It had been paid by Cigna, so we have to pay for that. And in addition, we have some run out costs in the
To complete the EJAP program.
Thank you, to complete the CT chip. Yvonne, you just messaged me with a question.
Actually, I have two of them. I'm talking about five year reading of the minutes. What is Jill's last name?
I'm sorry?
What is Jill's last name?
Jill?
Yes, you mentioned Jill.
Collins, our finance director.
Okay, I don't know these people and I'm
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Jim Rupert, who's our interim town administrator. And Jill Collins is our finance director.
Okay, thank you. And one other question. Above you said reminding Mike and Bob about not having someone from their political side of the spectrum. What side are they on?
They're Republicans.
Thank you. I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. All right, so the Board of Finance did not do any additional reductions to, to the budget other than the 130,000 medical savings. And the Board of Education reported 64,499 in medical savings. Which is the actual medical savings offset by an additional special education cost that they are going to incur next year. They had apparently a very large swing in people who had been opting out and opted in to their, to the state partnership plan. Because originally their savings were anticipated to be somewhere between 300 and 400,000. So they definitely had more than the 10% crossovers we were projecting in, in the, in the first part. We, on the town side, we had one crossover. Which we could have had 12.
Just a question, is it, Board of Finance, Board of Finance, they're meeting this week again?
No, they're, they set the number for referendum. Jim, do you remember what that number was? I forgot my notes this morning. It was 23 million something.
Yes, I agree with that part.
Do we know what the increase or decrease was that they set? Percentage approximately?
The percentage of increase was over a 3% tax increase.
In the entire budget?
It was looking, right, it was looking somewhere around 5%, but with the additional givebacks, both by the town and the Board of Ed, it reduced it from almost 5% to just a whisker over 3%.
Okay. We've always had a hard time, or in years gone by recently, that 3% has been the, the mark that either makes it or breaks it.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're looking at a 40.16 potential mill rate. Although the mill rate hasn't been set. And the number I have in my notes, which may not be the final number, was 23 million 073,494. They have not published their minutes yet for that meeting and I didn't have time to listen to the whole tape, which is posted on the town's website, if you're interested. Any other questions on the budget report?
Good, thank you.
And I've also done item A, Report on Budget Transfers. Which is an attachment in your minutes. In your packet, rather. Jim, I have a question on the next to the last item, 2,200 to Fire Commission Other Payroll from professional training. Is that backwards? Because it is.
I think it is too.
Yeah, it is.
I think that's, I think it is.
So if we could correct that in the minutes, Yvonne. It's 2,200 from transfer should be from, I'm sorry, to Fire Commission Professional Training from Fire Commission Other Payroll. Any other questions on those transfers? These are all transfers that were approved at our last meeting for Jim and I to do in unison. All right, under other. I got an email from John Elsesser, the town manager in the town of Coventry. Last week that the Senate bill lost. That was to approve the expansion of the Bolton Lakes Water Pollution Control Authority into the town of Coventry to take in the properties up to the shopping center on both sides of the road was approved by the House and the governor signed it last week. So there are no obstacles to that extension anymore. Bob Di Pietro?
What?
You, you're muted now, Bob.
What shopping center?
Used to be Allen Supermarket. It's now the Auction House.
Yes.
Right.
There, there has been some interest in, there's some vacant property across the street that there's been some interest in developing, but in order to do that, they needed the sewers.
Yeah, and they also, they have the same issue that the Bolton side had with the very high water table. Most of the residential property. And this, the system would be picking that up. This also finally, it's interesting, just as a side note, that the legislature approved this almost a week after Deep and, and what was, the other agency were fighting over this. Yeah, they, they decided that, oh, it's okay. They're stepping back and, and it's and this is, this has been a, almost a four year trek, just to get this point.
And this, this is not a very big distance. This is extremely short from our town.
It's, not only is it a short distance, but the stub to the town of Coventry was originally approved and has been, it's in place to the town line. The town Coventry paid for that when we originally did the system. And, and Deep was in agreement to that. They, they and OPM got into a bit of a disagreement and it just, project just got, you know, in, into that twilight zone. So now, thank you Sandy for bringing that up. That's, that's, that's really good news for the authority and the folks on there because it really helps the revenue that will be, the authority will be getting in. It helps, helps maintain that system and keeps the expenses down.
So the other, my other, other is in response to Mr. Anzaldi's request that we talked about at our last meeting regarding the no parking signs on Iroquois Trail. A group of us, including Dan Richmond and Brian Contenta, have been monitoring the parking situation and in no case have we ever seen more than one car parked there and the car was parked away from the intersection and away from anyone's driveway and was probably a visitor at one of the adjacent homes or nearby homes rather than somebody on the trail. So we're going to continue to monitor that, but at this point it doesn't seem to be.
I go by, I go, if I may, I go by that twice a day, every workday and I mean literally, literally have seen one car and that's after that meeting. I just, it just happens and that's it. I've never, I just, it's in the morning and in the afternoon, so.
Are they checking on weekends?
Yes.
They are, okay. That would be the only time that there would be a congestion there if there was one.
That's true.
I will say that I see people, you know, at the bench regularly there at the top of the hill. But there are no cars on Iroquois Trail when I see people. And so essentially, they, they are parking in other appropriate places.
All right, new business? I don't believe we have any. Jim, am I correct?
I think we've covered it all. I think the only other thing, you know, with yeah, I think that's it for the moment.
All right, we've already had our update on the Board of Finance actions on the budget. The governor did renew his executive order that allowed no excuse absentee ballots. And the absentee ballot applications are currently available on the town website. They're available from the homepage. So if you're interested in an absentee ballot, you can get that. So if you're interested in an absentee ballot, you can get that filled out and sent to the town clerk. The ballots aren't available yet, but they should be. In sep- probably by the beginning of next week. And there the Dropbox that was outside the town clerk's office will reappear. As we get closer. To the referendum date, which is June fifteenth.
Hey, one week from today, in June seventh. The senior center will open again?
I don't think yet.
Why not?
Well, we have, we have not made any definitive plans about reopening of the senior center. We've had conversations with Carrie. About what types of programs? And she is in the, in the planning phase of that. And that's, you know, kind of where we're at at the moment. Town, town staff will be coming back together. On June seventh. And we figured that was the first step in the process. You know, toward reopening. Will be looking a- after that point, we will be looking more. Seriously about how we, you know, reopen town hall for business. And looking at other things like. You know, library and. The senior center.
Thank you, Jim, brother. Oh, it's. Excuse me, oh, it's the C F. Set some kind of a timeframe. Or something. To give the public idea when these things might be available. Perfect. Can just drag on and on and on.
Well, here's the thing. I'll move on to the next thing in my report. Which is the COVID update. After staying at two hundred and eighty-seven cases for a week, we had a new case over the weekend. And. Of our overall population. Are over sixty-five in Bolton. Is a hundred percent fully vaccinated, which is amazing. Our. And the Connecticut average is eighty-nine point nine. Our forty-five to sixty-four. Age group. Has sixty-four percent with one dose. The information on fully vaccinated isn't available. For that age group. But the Connecticut average is eighty-two point one, so it's eighteen percent higher. And in Bolton, one percent. Is fifty people.
So tell me that again, we're eighteen percent lower than the rest of Connecticut or we're eighteen percent higher?
Sixty-four group.
Okay.
And in the. Fifteen to forty-four group. Were sixty-two percent and the Connecticut average is sixty-four point seven.
So we're close there.
Pretty much the same, yeah.
Well, that's two, two percent, that's a hundred people below the average. So. And those numbers aren't changing. The only thing that's been changing over the, and I haven't been tracking this for a long time, but. At least since the first of May. And. Our over sixty-five group has done a fantastic job. Originally, we were in the eighties for the sixty-five to seventy-five. And in the nineties for the seventy-five and above age group. And now we're a hundred percent of. What the Department of Public Health thinks is. Over sixty-five now. I have to give the Department of Health a little nudge because they're using nineteen, two thousand nineteen data. And there are a few people who are probably in the sixty-four group here, who should have been in the over sixty-five group now. But that would just drive the numbers down because they're looking, they're reporting actual age group. So. I don't know what we can do to get the numbers up. But we really should be at the average, at the Connecticut average.
Well, the good news is the. The senior population. Is there? And and that's, I mean, that bodes well and and it's just, you know, it's, there's something about being older, sometimes common sense does survive. Even though our bodies don't quite survive as well.
How are we doing for fatalities?
We have not had an additional fatality, we are still at five.
That's good. So from from that perspective, we're doing very well.
Right, right. Most of our cases have actually been. In the. Twelve. To sixty-four age range.
Twelve.
We've actually, we've actually had some pediatric cases, very young pediatric cases, but that was inter-family spread.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The the advantage to. Not being vaccinated in the group that you talk about, not up to the state, is the fact that that group is not the most high risk. You know, the, the, the high-risk group of fatality has done a very good job. The, the lower age people seem to get it and survive it relatively. Easily, so we're. We've done a very good job of protecting the people we could lose the quickest.
I have to agree, that's exactly what appears to be going on. All right, let's see. The annual report has been, has come back from the printers. It's available at the selectman's office. So if you're up there and want to pick one up, go ahead, Jim.
Actually, the town clerk's office.
Oh, that. I picked it up from Kathy the other day, but in the town clerk's.
Usually, usually they're in the town clerk's. Office, but that's okay.
All right. Is there any way, is there any way we can get that up on the town website?
It is. I believe Kathy told me it is, is it is published on the town website.
Can you?
I will double check.
Okay, because I went looking for it today and couldn't find it.
Well, you know, the website is not the easiest thing in the world to navigate. But I do, and I'll double check, but I do believe it was up on the town website. Before we actually had the published copies back from the the printer, but I will certainly double check on that.
Okay. Jim, over to you.
So I wanted to, you know, put the, the health benefit change on. My thing to discuss with you again tonight, because frankly, I want to say that open enrollment went very, very smoothly. And, you know, although staff are not super happy about changing. Health insurance plans again, because we've done it quite a bit in the last handful of years. The feedback I've gotten frankly overall is that staff are really pretty pleased about this change, and I think. That's important for you as, you know, the the governing body of the town to know that. You know, the the employees feel like this is a. A better plan that they've had with Cigna, and they, they seem to really appreciate. This change, even though it means doing business a little differently. So I think that's important to understand and have that. Any, any questions from any of you about the? The health benefit change from your perspectives? Great.
If they're happy and we save money, it's a win.
Right.
Well, you know, absolutely, and I think, you know, I. You know, I, I've been with the town of, you know, almost fourteen years at this point. And it, it, and one of the things that brought me to work for the town. Other than, you know, meeting some wonderful people. At the very beginning was the benefit package and. You know, this, this benefit package is very similar to the benefit package that I enjoyed when I first. Came to work for Bolton as far as health insurance is concerned. So I think it it's very comparable, and from that perspective, I think. You know, it is one of those things that makes public service more attractive to some employees. Especially when, you know, maybe pay rates aren't what they would be in the private marketplace if they were working for, you know, a large company somewhere, so. You know, the, the attitude, the atmosphere and the benefits are really, but. Keep our employees satisfied and staying in the employment of the town of Bolton, so I think. Overall, this was really a positive change, both for, you know, the board from the financial perspective and from. The perspective of providing great benefits for our employees. Update on. The fire truck, I did speak with Chief Dixon and Mike, if you have something to add here, you know, feel free. Things are going in a positive direction, things are moving along, you know, last. Week when I spoke with Chief Dixon, the engine and transmission had been removed. The engine apparently was so seized, it was difficult to. Separate the transmission from the engine. But that work is progressing. Sandy and I had had a communication. With the chief early on, you know, they, they were talking about potentially trying to reuse the. Existing radiator, and we thought that, you know, it was not a good idea to be. Pennywise and pound foolish. And so the recurrent radiator is actually being rebuilt at a company. I can't remember where, but it's a company that the town of Bolton has done business with on multiple occasions, so we will have a refurbished. Radiator that's going in at the same time. Last week. The chief was saying, you know, probably sixty days out. Now they're saying, you know, probably closer to thirty days and not the full sixty days out.
Great.
So it seems like things are really progressing. The chief is going to make a personal visit to the, to Atlantic Detroit Diesel in Middletown later on this week. And will be able to provide us a further update at that point, but it seems like. Things are going pretty well. Mike, did you have anything to add, anything I missed?
No, you, you covered everything that I've gotten from the chief, so. You know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased that things are moving along and that the, the engine that's going in there is, uh. Seems to be a very good fit for that truck, very comparable to the engine that came out of it, so. We should be in good shape once it's done.
Yeah, unfortunately, we did have, you know. One fire without that piece of apparatus in town. But I have to say, the response from our fire department and from other local departments was absolutely tremendous. It was well done, you know, it could, could have gone badly quickly, but it, but it didn't because. There were enough people and enough pieces of equipment there to do the job and do it efficiently, so.
And I gotta, I gotta give a hat, hats off.
Questions on the fire truck.
Jim, just on your, your comments on the fire, I gotta give a hats off to our cadets. They did a, an outstanding job for a bunch of young people who are just coming in, I mean. The, the outside work they did, they were fantastic, so, you know, the, the guys that are the seasoned veterans went to work inside and these. These kids outside, you know, had bottles laid out, had everything ready, they, they did a tremendous job and. If we can keep them for the next few years, they're going to make some good firefighters.
Excellent.
And it, and it was hot.
It was hot.
It, it was an uncle day for firefighting. Also, everybody did. Really well.
Did, did you want to mention the, the price of the radiator, or did you, or guys already talked about that?
I think I. Think the chief said it was around thirty dollars.
About what?
I think the chief said that. The cost of the radiator will be around thirty-six hundred.
Yeah, somewhere in that general vicinity.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, still keeps us well below the fifty.
As long as it, right, as long as the cost of the engine comes in, you know, we're projected. I, I think we're fine with the monies that we transferred for those repairs currently. And if we have to, you know, we'll, we'll look at, you know, making additional transfer if necessary. Very good. It does not look that way currently.
The thing that I was concerned about is if that radiator sucked up something that it shouldn't have. When the engine blew. Or when the seals let go or whatever happened. That we could have a wonderful new engine. Additional issues caused by a bad radiator, so. It's easy to replace a radiator while it's out of a truck.
It was a prudent move, it was a very wise move, I believe.
Thank you. Jim, can you text our town attorney? Or has he just joined us?
While I'm doing. Just a couple of other interesting pieces of information, you know, we are working on. Before Josh left, he started with a new vendor. That is ongoing and we are. Beyond that, we also, some of you have made, made. Seen on social media that we have a bear running around town.
Yes.
This is Rich.
Rich, it's time to join us on the meeting when you have a moment.
All right, let me find the email with the zoom and I'll, I'll shoot him.
Sounds good. So we have put some, some messaging out on social media, we do have a. Bolton bulletin that's going to be coming out later on this week, I've asked Kathy to. Pull some Bear Safe information off the DEP website. You know, unfortunately, today, the bear was sighted on. Watchers Road in proximity of the Rails Trail. And, you know, as much as people are supposed to keep their dog leashed when they're going down the trail, I know that doesn't always happen, so we're going to put some reminders out there. About those sorts of things so that. You know, hopefully, we don't have bear people and bear pet encounters.
Cabela's Bear Spray, I carry it whenever I go outdoors now, I have for about a year.
Yeah, the other thing I will. Say is last week, we did, you know, we, we had purchased the, this thing called an owl, which kind of looks like an owl, it. Sits on the table and it has. Cameras and a sixty-degree microphone that will pick up. Voices and the cameras automatically move to wherever the active speaker is, and we purchased that. Knowing that at some point we'll be doing some hybrid meetings. We did do a test of the owl last week and it, it worked pretty well, so we are. Are ready in the event that we have to do that. There's some new skills we'll have, absolutely have to learn, but, but we have the ability to. To do those hybrid meetings at this point if we find the need to do so. Any questions? For me before we move on to the executive session? All right, Sandy, it's back to you.
Thank you. At this point. I'd like a motion to go into executive section to discuss. Discuss potential litigation and include in our executive session. Our tax collector Lori Bushnell. Our town attorney, Richard Barker. And our interim town administrator, Jim Rupert. It was moved by Bob Mora, is there a second? Seconded by Bob Di Pietro. Thank you.
Let me stop the recording here.
Thank you, we are out of executive session. Bob Di Pietro, did you have a motion?
Well, I guess we move, I move that we empower. Lori and. I mean, the tax collector and litigation to proceed.
Is there a second to that motion? Was seconded by Kim Miller. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. I see five hands, that's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Rich and Lori for joining us. I now need a motion to go into executive session regarding. The supervisor's contract negotiations and include our interim town administrator.
I will be right back.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
It's been moved. By Bob Morris, seconded by Bob Di Pietro. Okay, Mike said he will be right back. Jim, would you turn off? The recording, please?
This is adjournment.
Mike, did you have a motion?
No, I said that if you look at what's left, it says adjournment, so if that's. No, I said, if you look at what's left, it says adjournment, so if that's the case, I'll make the motion.
That is the case, so it was moved by Mike Aramita, seconded by Bob Mora, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
There's five hands and five ayes, thank you, be safe everyone, we'll see you soon.